The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business, I just want to announce to everybody that the oath of office has been signed by our three newly elected board members, Tricia Andrews, Matt Stock, and Don Snyder. So, we now open the floor for nominations to vote for president of the school board for the 2017-2018 school year.
I nominate Mike Fuchs for president.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, if there's no objections, we'll cast a ballot for Mr. Fuchs to be president of the board for the 2017-2018 school year. Next order of business is for vice president of the board. Open the floor for nomination.
I nominate Matt Stock for vice president.
Any further nominations? So then we'll take a vote. My lovely assistant will hand you a piece of paper and just simply write your candidate on there. I just want to remind the Board of Education that while nominations are a good formality to get the people's names out, you are allowed to vote for any sitting board member. The vote was three to three. There is one board member missing. Some of the options that the board has is we can discuss and continue to revote, or if the board would want to make a proposal to table it, if that proposal passes, the motion could be tabled to vote for vice president until all seven board members are here. So it's their discretion.
I would make a motion to table it until we have all seven members.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Then the last order of business for me is to hand out the Board of Ed's Code of Conduct. This is something that Board of Ed has worked on throughout the years, and it kind of states the kind of expectations and clearly code of conduct for the board members. So I'll pass this around, and then when it gets back to me, I'll have Mr. Bob Leal sign it when I get ahold of him, and then I will give each of you a copy of it. So, Fuchs, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Rick. And as you just noted, all are present except Mr. Bob Leal, so we'll call. First matter of business, approval of the agenda for this evening.
I'll make one.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is, in front of us, we have the annual reorganization meeting, annual appointments that consists of architect, attorneys, the audit committee, which have three names listed, myself, Matt Stock, and James Bob Leal. Just note, all board members, all are welcome at those meetings. The census administrator, the clerk, banking designations, the DASAC coordinators at each of the buildings, external auditors, classroom activities, funds officers, various advisors, internal auditors, claims auditors, et cetera. I won't go through the litany you have in front of you. Is there any questions on those? No questions? Need a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, approval of minutes from our meeting on June 12th, including executive session and the audit committee that was held prior on that same date. Everything seems in order. Any questions on those? Need a motion?
I'll make one.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to the first public comment session of the evening. If anybody has anything, there's microphones on either side. Please state your name and address, and we'll get back to you if you have any need for information that we don't have here. We'll have a second session later on, so we'll pass on that for now. Any unfinished board business? Anybody? Turn it over to Dr. Hicks and the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we're going to have an update on the Capitol Project by Dan Drozd, our clerk of the works, and Brian Logal, our superintendent of Buildings and Grounds. So, guys, you're on.
Thank you. Do you have a slideshow? I don't know if you want to switch to the front seats or no? I think we have a slideshow. We do. Just a few general comments before we start it. Obviously, we're in the third year of our project, and we knew that we'd have a lot of work to do in this summer, and probably from December, January, and February of this year, I know Dan and myself were doing a lot of coordinating, trying to get things so that we weren't packed into the eight or nine weeks that we have throughout the summer, but it's just not enough. I have to say thanks to the principals that were very understanding with what we had to do. We found areas where guys could work, and it wasn't a big disruption, or any disruption in most cases. Nobody even knew they were there, which was great. We end up, like I said, with some great contractors that understood the K-12 market and what they were doing. So they did a great job. They're still doing a great job. We're almost done. To be honest, after three years, I'll be happy. All right, so our fifth update. Again, we had our three phases. We're in the third phase right now, looking to finish up with majority work in September. Like I said, from November to April this year, we didn't, actually, I said limited work, but we ended up being able to do a lot more than just limited. We had just about a full crew in the basement of Clarence Center for quite a while, doing work in the crawl spaces and things. The guys were great. They actually had the class schedule, and they actually knew when they could drill in the floor when they couldn't. It was good. Obviously, we just passed a June 26th start, and all the guys geared up and had product delivered before we started. And September 4th is our day. We're hoping to be really substantially complete besides maybe a few things in parking lots or other areas that we just decided to push off because we could. In November, we're looking to have project closeout, and hopefully final cost reports in January, I hope. Some of the work, if you remember, the high school, we pushed off the high school pool air handling unit replacement. That was a delivery issue from last summer. We just couldn't get it in time, so it's being worked on right now. High school main entrance, we kind of slowed down with that, but that'll be done in the next few weeks. High school elevator, that one's moving along as scheduled. All of our paving work, sidewalk work, transportation, Harris Hill, Clarence Center, Ledview, it's all this summer. Classroom door hardware, that's ongoing. It's just changing over to the intruder function, where you can lock the doors from inside rather than the old method of having only the lock on the outside. Security cameras, those will all be finished up this summer. And of course, probably a large part that not everybody sees is our network infrastructure for the district itself, the major upgrade, but nobody will see it, but your phones and all your devices will be fast. That's all that matters. Middle school, right now, we're working on the pool water filter. That scope of work, I'll show you some pictures. It's pretty involved. The gym flooring, that's actually, we finished the gym flooring for the middle school, so that's actually was ahead of schedule. So right now, we're just going through the drying time for the new finishes. Lights and data upgrades, Clarence Center, got a complete fire alarm overhaul, a lot of the sidewalks, complete heating and ventilation system replacement, the gym flooring, our hot water system, lighting and data. And Ledview, we're replacing all the ventilators, fire alarm, gym flooring, floors, hot water system, lighting, network. And transportation, we're just going to do the parking lot upgrade. Partial. All right, just some pictures. This was one of the first ones I showed you two years ago. We're going to be replacing these, and now that they're all gone, that's what's left. I thought you'd like this one because there's a giant business there. That's a little surprises, but thankfully, that had been taken care of a little while ago. Another old one that I showed you last time, our temporary loading dock door at Ledview, which is now finally temporary, it's gone. So that's what we're starting with. That'll start to be rebuilt probably next week. Clarence Center, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Clarence Center cafeteria, that's the roof work and duct work for the new rooftop air conditioning, heating. The old one was in the floor. I don't know, you had to actually crawl to get to it. Probably looked good on paper fifty years ago, but we're going to put it on the roof. The Clarence Center gymnasium, removed the gym ceiling. We'll get a new ceiling in there. We needed access to it for a new roof drain. Plus, we can get to all the other stuff that's up there. Some of the old steam heating units that were removed, it was lovely. All the stuff that was behind there for I don't know how many years, we're replacing it, so it looks a lot better by the time we get to putting new units on. Bear with me, it's not changing. There we go. That's what it's supposed to look like before we actually put the new units on. We actually put new sheet metal around it, make them look nice. Some of the typical classrooms, it's kind of hard to see in the photo, but we're getting new piping to the new units. This is probably the 1970s wing classrooms. These are a little bit cleaner, they were block walls. It's tough to see, but there is a new sheet metal sleeve in there. And there in the background is actually the new unit ventilators, and the old one's sitting in the forefront of the picture. It's kind of deceiving, but they're much smaller than the new ones. For the Clarence Center library, we removed everything because that carpet's coming out. The ceiling actually was removed so that that can also get a new air conditioning rooftop unit. As anybody that worked there knows, didn't work very well. Another shot. One thing I like, you can't really tell, but last time they replaced the carpet, they left the old carpet underneath it. Just put it around it. That's all you need to do. For the pool, like I said, our pool air handler, it almost made it to the deadline, but it actually died about two weeks before we planned. So, in effort to control humidity, we covered the pool with plastic, basically a poor man's pool cover. The pool is actually very large, and those are 100-foot-long rolls of plastic, but took six of them to cover it. One of the things that we were trying to finish up was the math wing railing and ramp. There were stairs there before. I know it's easier for my guys as far as taking care of snow removal. Some of the fire doors that we're adding at the high school here, this one's in the corner wing as well. It's in progress. All right, this is probably the most dramatic, if there can be such a thing. For the middle school, the south gym, for years, it was obviously a dark, dingy kind of gym, where we actually replaced the lights over one of the Easter break, or the Easter break. So that's what it looked like just before they started. There we go. That was actually the first pass of the sander, so Dan took a photo of it because that's actually how much different and how dark the finish was compared to the actual white floor. And that was actually where, before we actually took out the lights themselves, it was kind of a yellow hue to the whole gymnasium. And that's it after we finished completely sanding it. Little bit of a difference. That's what it looks like today. Yeah, pan around a few doesn't look very good. But I take one. Now, the north gym was not as anywhere near dark of a color for the finish, but it still looked different. You could tell from one of the repairs that had been made a few years ago that it was much lighter than the old floor, because that was what that floor looked like after we were done completely sanding, all the finish, all the lines, everything off. That floor turned out great. The new emblems in the middle, that's not the best photo, but they did a nice job. For the pool, as I talked about earlier, we had ended up having the Virginia Graham Baker Act kind of required a lot of upgrades for pools. And when you do a major renovation, you have to replace drains, filters, put in surge tanks, a whole slew of requirements that, some are necessary, some, in my opinion, are not. So these are the guys, the process of actually removing the old pool drains, the main drains themselves. And it's a mess. This is actually them just getting started. They actually had to remove that whole line, everything that was buried under there. Lot of work. But hopefully be good for another 50, 60 years once we're done. A couple of photos, I don't know if anybody had the chance to see, they're actually on our website, but it actually was our drone photographs of the turf fields. The drone photos were much better than anything we took. Just kind of highlights. The contractors, Northeast and A-Turf, did an awesome job for us. Overall view of the actual baseball and softball. Turned off some lights, it looks a lot better. That was some of the higher photos the drone could take that we can't. Turned out really well. And just to finish up, right now, everything is still under budget. We actually, as we projected before, we figured we have money left over in the end. And right now, unless anything unforeseen comes up, but right now, the biggest unknown was the Ledview gym floor. I don't know if you remember, last year, the big surprise was the Harris Hill gym floor. That cost us a little extra money because there were some hidden surprises. This one right now has been good. We haven't had any issues. The guys are, we'll probably finish up this week. And after that, that's our biggest unknown, and we should be, I guess not coasting, but finishing it up. Any questions? Sure. Yeah, well, there's two problems right there. The P.A. system, I think we became aware of that buzzing noise, and I think we just need adjustment, for lack of a better term. The door is a different issue. There are new aluminum doors, and with the tolerances, we're really surprised that as the doors heat up or cool down, the latches weren't quite in the same spot every time. So, we actually have another set of, I guess, new hardware coming in that hopefully will take care of that issue. We've been fighting that from the winter and then all the way into the summer. So it's, they've come out, they've been great, they've adjusted it, but then, you know, three or four days later, when the temperature changes, we have the same issues.
Do you have an anticipated date that you're going to return the buildings to staff to get that done this summer?
Right now, we talked to all the principals and told everybody, really don't have anybody come back till a week before. Is that September 4th or 5th is the first Monday there? And right now, I think we're on track, so everybody should be able to come back easily a week before school starts. In some cases, if, I know, give you an example, Clarence Center, we know we'd completely removed all the stuff in the kindergarten wing, and that's almost a complete rebuild, so the teachers need a little more time. So we're trying to push that as fast as we can to get the teachers back in because they have a lot more work than some of the others.
I know with on air handling projects, one of the big problems is you replace the unit, but if you don't adjust the ducting, it doesn't turn out to be useful. So is it safe to assume that we've taken the opportunity to adjust where we think we needed to, you know, to actually better utilize the new units?
Yes, actually, included with this package is air rebalancing, the whole, for all the systems, especially the pool here. That was one that we knew right away, we're going to have to completely rebalance it because we're changing the way the air flows. So, right now, we've done the air balancing for Harris Hill, Sheridan Hill, and the high school here, except the pool. Other areas will be balanced probably in mid-August, once the systems are in place. Once the power's on, they try to get in there and balance right away. Anything else? I don't get a lot of phone calls from neighbors or angry neighbors anymore, so things must be going well. Nobody's knocking on my door. So other than that, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
So just to let the board members know, we'll do another update towards the end of August, just to give you kind of the closeout, everything that's happening. We don't anticipate any problems with the opening of schools. The site work is kind of weather-dependent. Everything else is on schedule and below budget, and it's the great work of Dan and Brian and Rick, really, that have done that. So I would just like to publicly congratulate them. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. That brings us to the finance report.
Yes, we only have May's balancing report for you tonight. At the last board meeting, we got the authorization to close the books and to do all the budget transfers and to pay the bills. So tonight is just this great May's financials.
Does anybody have any questions on the financial report?
Just, I guess, a comment, or if someone can explain to me, and I've seen this before, just where towards the end, where there's, you know, some dates and checks, and there's some comments listed, I do see temporarily and periodically, like, late charges.
Yes, so what you're looking at is the internal claims audit is reported, so every single payment from the district has to run through an independent set of eyes.
Right.
And we did get now with a couple of late fees on, if I remember correctly, Verizon was one of them. We're still disputing those late fees because when we got a couple of those bills, we were in the middle of working out what we don't understand in some of their bills with them. And because they have a short turnaround, a two-week deadline, you know, it wasn't paid by that time. So then what we ended up working out with them is we're going to pay the late charges, pay the bill, and still continue to work with them. We have a higher degree of confidence when we do that with a so-called utility that is governed as opposed to with a private company.
Any other questions? Need a motion? For F1? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Personnel, Dr. Patac?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. You have a number of items before you this evening, beginning with a resignation, a request for leave of absence, and this also, by the way, includes the addendum, which I put at your place this evening. Two informational items, various appointments. We're working on staffing for next September. You'll see a number of special education and various other subject area teachers, regular substitutes, as well as probationary appointments. You also have the appointment of a teacher on special assignment for the summer, the summer orientation for incoming freshmen. Extracurricular, as far as the fall sports are concerned, the only modifications to this report are at the middle school level for both the girls volleyball and girls field hockey team. Mentor training program, one event for the extracurricular at the high school, summer guidance counselors being appointed, summer school psychologist, as well as summer curriculum projects, presentation compensation, the community education program for this summer, as well as the employment agreement for the superintendent of schools.
Anybody have any questions? Somebody asked for two motions. For the first, could we have a motion on items P1 to P9? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second, could I have a motion for board resolution P10?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Abstain? Thank you. All right, non-instruction?
Before we start that, Mr. Fuchs, I'd just like to tell you that we have a number of individuals in the audience this evening who are people who will be beginning employment with us this coming September. Kurt Deesfeld, physical education. Abby Gordon, special education. And Michelle Tipton, also special education.
Welcome to the district.
In regard to the non-instruction appointments, you have a number of resignations, various appointments. Some of these are annual appointments of teacher aides, some are new. We also have two new clerk, our senior clerk, Typus, being appointed, and an appointment of a substitute nurse.
Any questions on P11 to P13? No questions, can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Special needs and student activities.
There's actually a number of annual items for special education in addition to the approval of the individual education plans for the kids. So the first is, there were a large number of committee on special education, school level meetings at the end of the year. These really are things that happened from March all the way through June. 211 meetings, placements in and out of the district. Also, six preschool special education meetings during the last month of the year. In addition, some of the things that are voted on annually for special education by the board. First, membership on the CSE or CPSE committee, which usually includes pupil personnel, teachers, administrators, anyone who could potentially sit in on a committee meeting during the school year. Second, the board has to adopt impartial hearing officers from the state list. Those are on for tonight. Third, there's a surrogate parent that's appointed, and if the regular parent can't make it to the meeting, the surrogate parent sits in there instead. So that happens every once in a while, and there's a couple of surrogate parent names on the list. And then finally, there are people who are authorized to bring initial evaluations to the committee on special education, mostly principals, but also some central office staff. Those are the things that the board approves in tonight's meeting.
All standard items?
Standard items, yes.
Any questions? Motion approved?
Motion?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board development?
So, we'll start on the board development with those members who would like to volunteer to be part of the Erie County Association of School Board positions. And I'm going to find that little chunk. Do you believe this one's all taken care of?
I think we've all discussed and have aligned on the position.
So maybe I could just announce the title, and you can let me know who the person that has volunteered. First would be the voting delegate for the NISBA convention.
That would be myself.
So that's Mike Fuchs, and the alternate?
Don Snyder.
Would be Don Snyder. Second would be the ECASB delegate assembly representative.
Tricia Andrews.
And the alternate?
Don Snyder.
Okay. Third would be the ECASB budget and finance team representative.
Matt Stock.
And the alternate?
Dennis Preory.
And finally would be the ECASB legislative team representative.
Same as budget, Matt and Dennis. Great.
Thank you, board members, for volunteering for the ECASB officerships. Second, this is the meeting when we talk about the liaisons to the PTOs, CSEF, and the SEPTA organization. So I'll announce the name of the place, and then you can let me know who the liaison is. Clarence Center Elementary will be?
James Bob Leal.
Okay. Harris Hill Elementary? Harris Hill Elementary.
Trish Andrews.
Leadview Elementary.
Matt Stock.
Sheridan Hill Elementary.
Dennis Preory.
Clarence Middle School.
John Fisk.
Clarence High School.
Trish Andrews.
SEPTA.
Myself.
And the foundation. Thank you, board members, for volunteering for those liaison positions. Next, we have a heads-up, not a voting item, on upcoming field trips that will be overnight trips for Clarence High School. As these become, as they come closer to the actual date and the field trip request forms are filled out, we will bring them to the board, but this is just the annual heads-up that we give you about high school trips for the course of the year. Secondly, we're seeking approval for a field trip to Quebec. It's the annual field trip that happens at the same time as the Washington DC trip for eighth graders. It's been vetted by our new field trip expert, Mr. Mancuso, and everything seems to be in order and we're recommending that the board approve the trip for the kids to Quebec City.
Any questions or comments?
I'm going to probably just make one comment. I was committed to getting the results, but I would imagine that this is already started to be done from parents, you know, that's the first set of line up in their life as well, so if you can try to get these to us.
Yes. Thank you, we will do that.
Do we need a motion? We need a motion on the appointments?
Those are just informational. The trip would need to be resolved.
We're going to work on the, correct? Second? All of them in favor? What are the policy?
This is the three thousand section, the community relations. This section is quite a bit longer than the last couple of the first two. We didn't get much feedback throughout the past month on anything. We did talk about the solicitation of donations section and we still feel it's a solid policy and that will make sure that we, as a district and classroom to classroom, meet the requirements of that policy. You know, at this time, the board can discuss it tonight, can table it for further discussion or being the second reading, you can approve it.
Is there a comment? Is there a motion to be? Is there a motion to be added? Three thousand? Section of the policy manual?
Someone?
Second? All those in favor? Aye. All right, carried. That brings up our second public comment session of the evening. Anybody have comments? Do you want to make a comment? All right. There are, last quarter business before adjournment is, we have in our pack, a list of, Dennis and John Fisk will be attending for our annual summer treat on August 22nd here at District God. And then our next school meeting is on August 28th, which will be first by a joint meeting with the town of Clarence. So, with that, look for a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing a pending litigation to CTA and matting the employment of a particular person. Do you get a motion? Second? All those in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.